It is one o'clock. I will call this meeting of the Douglas County Planning Commission to order. I will ask everyone to please silence their devices, to sit down and shh, private conversations. And I will ask Jim to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is now time for opening public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker on matters over which the Planning Commission has jurisdiction. The Planning Commission wants to encourage respectful consideration of all views by members of the public. If content is disruptive, disrespectful, irrelevant, or offensive, the individual would be asked to stop speaking. Public comment will also be taken on agenda items that are identified for possible action, and we will have closing public comment. I will now open public comment. Please sign the roster, say your name for the record into the microphone. First speaker, please. Seeing no one rise, I will close public comment. It is now time for approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
We move to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Lori and a second by Bryce. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Time for approval of the minutes. Do we have any changes to the minutes?
I apologize, I'm looking. I apologize, I was looking for the specific reference. There was a motion that was made that I had seconded and made comments and accepted Commissioner Walder's modifications, and yet in the final vote it indicates that our vice chairman was the seconder. So it just screwed up the two names. And I apologize because I'm looking for it right now.
I can see it in my mind's eye, but I can't find the specific reference. It's going to take a moment.
Correct. The reference is, and thank you, Commissioner Walder handed me the piece of paper. You take a look at 12, page 12, page 13, and page 14. That's the 14 has the inconsistent seconder listed as Commissioner Walder's. That's my only change.
Okay, Lori?
Apparently page 14 is the bad page this time. There's a reference to Chairwoman Hales. It should be corrected to Chairwoman Casey. So that's the only change that I have to suggest.
I think we all picked up on that one, and I thank you very much for the compliment. If there are no other changes or corrections, do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion by Bryce, second?
Second.
Second by Paul. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And we will move into our agenda for possible action. Discussion to recommend adoption of 2025 update to the Carson River Flood Plane Management Plan presented by the Carson Water Subconservancy District, CWSD. Edwin James, CWSD General Manager, presenting. And that's what it says in the agenda, although we have Brenda and Debbie Courtney Walker.
Good afternoon, Courtney Walker. I'm the Stormwater Program Manager for Douglas County. I wanted to take a moment just to introduce Brenda and Debbie. I know they don't look like Ed, but they know the material very well. I wanted to just take a minute to explain the Carson Water Subconservancy District's role and how they support Douglas County in particular. They are a regional governmental agency, as many of you know. They work in every county that the Carson River watershed flows through. So it starts up in Alpine County, flows through Douglas, Carson City, Lyon County, and Churchill County. Story County is also a part of it. The river doesn't run through it, but the mountains drain to the Carson River. So they do a lot of different coordinated efforts in relation to floodplain management, outreach, invasive species, recreation, water supply, all different kinds of things. I work with them very closely on the floodplain management portion of it, and we've coordinated quite a few projects together. They're a cooperating technical partner with FEMA, and so they're able to obtain funding to help the counties do various area drainage master plans. And those typically, those watershed-wide type of studies typically translate into capital improvement projects that we put into our stormwater master plan for implementing those and being able to prioritize actual projects to help flooding issues and concerns that we have in Douglas County. They've also done a coordinated mapping of the Carson River floodplain. It used to be that you would look at a portion, or maybe start at a county line and end at another county line, but we've worked with them to do a comprehensive remapping of the Carson River floodplain from Alpine County down to Lyon County. And so our actions here in Douglas would affect those down in Carson, and so you kind of look at it as an integrated approach. This particular regional floodplain management plan was originally written in 2008, and it's updated generally every five years. We do submit it with our community rating system program to FEMA, which translates with all the other activities that the county does to help make our community more flood-safe. It translates to a 20% discount in flood insurance premiums for those who have to get those policies. So it's a great partnership, and I just wanted to take that moment just to give a little context to their presentation, but I'm going to let them give the bulk of the presentation, but I'm also here for questions, too. Thanks.
Thank you, Courtney. Debbie, I have to ask the question, are you related to our Mark?
Let's see. Well, Mark is my husband's second cousin, so his dad, Wilton, and my father-in-law were first cousins. So we are second cousins.
Thanks very much.
So yes, I'm pretty much related, but I'm actually wearing my mother-in-law Joyce Nettin-Rippe suit. She was such a fashionable lady that I inherited all her great clothes. So, yeah, and my sister-in-law still owns Joyce's.
Thank you. Brenda, it's wonderful to see you.
And this is Brenda Hunt, our Watershed Program Manager. So we're here today, as it says, to talk about the Carson River watershed, Flood Plane Management Plan, and talk about the background, the goals, and the objectives and strategies of the plan. So all the pictures in the plan are examples of different types of flooding.
One last question. Do you want us to ask questions as you go along, or wait till you're done?
I think we can go as we go along. Do you feel good with that?
At the end of chapters?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
So, as I was saying, the pictures in this just demonstrate different types of flooding that has occurred throughout our watershed. And of course, this is the biggest flood we have in recent history. It's not the absolute biggest flood that's ever happened, but it's the one we have the most pictures of. So we've, you're actually the last county. We've brought it to all the other counties, planning commissions, and executive boards, and they have adopted the plan. And so we're excited to present it to you today. So the main purpose of the Carson River Flood Plane Management Plan is to reduce flood risk. And so we are going to talk about the history of the plan and how we do that. And so the first rendition of the plan, like Courtney mentioned, I think, was in 2008, and it was funded by NDEP. And then, so all six of the watershed counties have adopted it, and it's meant to be a planning reference for land use and development that impacts the floodplain. And with that, I'll hand it over to Brenda.
So.
I think you have to.
Okay, goes on automatically. So Brenda Hunt, Watershed Program Manager, for the record. I'm just going to give you a little update about who the CRC is. The Carson River Coalition is a group of watershed-wide stakeholders that have helped create this plan throughout the years. They serve as the steering committee for integrated watershed planning process. And the idea of the CRC was created during a watershed-wide conference that was held in 1998 in response to that 1997 flood. CWSD was asked to facilitate the CRC and establish this integrated watershed planning process. Debbie, a little bit later, is going to talk about the 2003 main message that came out of the CRC, which basically is about floodplain management, and she'll talk about that in the future. But that, and working with the River Corridor and floodplain management working groups, so each of, the CRC is a very large stakeholder group, but we do have several specific working groups, and one of them is that River and Flood Plane Management Corridor Working Group, which helps create these plans. We've also done a series of public workshops associated with this update. As you can see on the slide, it shows a myriad of the types of entities that are associated with the CRC. They include private individuals, staff from local state and federal governments, tribal governments, citizen-driven groups, that type of thing. This program focuses on management of watershed resources long-term and addresses the diverse needs and concerns of all stakeholders throughout various Carson River Coalition working groups and those various specific programs that Courtney referred to in the very beginning. Funding for this effort was provided for this most recent 2025 update, as well as the 2018 update. That was through the Cooperative Technical Partners and the FEMA funding. And in the past, the previous iterations were a joint effort through a 319 grant program between NDEP and CWSD. So the CRC has been an integral part of all these plan updates. This just shows you the different plan history. The plan, it has led to a framework that allows us to get this FEMA funding, so that's a really important aspect of it. The plan includes, it includes suggested actions. The document contains county progress on each suggested action. It outlines future projects for FEMA CTP funding, and it serves as a guideline for the floodplain management in Douglas County, as well as throughout the whole watershed. This floodplain management plan is referenced in some of your county documents, including your hazard mitigation plans and your city master plan, or your master plans, county master plans. I'm going to hand it back over to Debbie.
Thank you. So even though we live in the high desert, river and flash flooding or alluvial fan flooding is nothing new. So it's, serious flooding is possible in any given time of the year. This slide provides some historical flood dates for the river and flooding here and elsewhere, namely Fallon and Carson City. So one of the things this plan does, I like to tell people when I'm doing demonstrations, is that the more we think about water before it floods, the better prepared we can be when it floods, and the less cost it is when disaster strikes. So flooding becomes a bigger and bigger problem due to increased development pressure. And of course, the more you build where water wants to go, whether it's the floodplain areas of the river or alluvial fans, it can create problems. And then as development occurs, elevated roadways and housing paths can also affect and change the routes of floods when they come. And so these photos are really telling. And these are, the major flooding listed here is just the Carson River. This doesn't include flash floods, but it just shows that flooding is something that's not a novelty. And so this picture shows that rivers want to meander. And so this plan provides a regional approach to floodplain management to protect the floodplains from development. And it's a common sense approach and the cheapest to avoid or reduce flood damage impacts on a watershed scale. And so that's why it begins with what we call the living river approach. And so this living river approach tries to keep the river's form and function so that we don't end up with an LA river in the middle of this valley and our watershed. And it also improves watershed health, and it, and has a lot of great benefits. So kind of our work, we sort of parse it out into these different baskets, but open floodplain lands improve water quality, provide wildlife habitat, they help to recharge groundwater, they, having a place for water to go keeps people safe rather than just rushing down and getting them. And the National Institute of Building Science did a study, and for every dollar that's spent on mitigation, so when we say mitigation, we're talking about keeping the floodplains open, building detention basins in places you know where floods go, keeping those roadside ditches and culverts clean. All of those things are mitigation. And so, but for every dollar that you spend on that, you're going to save $7 in a disaster. And that doesn't include the lives of people who have been saved from that risk. Since the plan was written, this concept, this living river concept, has also been applied to the rurals and dry lake beds. We want to know where water is going there, because, you know, when there's a flash flood, it becomes critical for people to understand it's just as dangerous to be in those channels as next to a river. And so another thing that's really important to mention is that this plan and the entire integrated watershed planning process advocates for a balanced approach for all users. You know, we don't want to put one user before the other, whether it's agricultural, municipal, ecosystem health. You know, you have to have a balanced approach. And so the balance between floodplain land conservation and economic development, I think of it in terms of, you know, when you plan development, to think about where water's going and, you know, maybe make those spaces where the water wants to flow, those open spaces, like Martin Slu is a great example. And so another thing is, we really want to balance property rights with natural resources. I love this picture. And with that in mind, the main message from the CRC that was created in 2003 and reaffirmed with each subsequent update is to protect the floodplain from future development, because once the floodplains, and especially the river's meander belt corridor are impacted by development, the river loses the ability to reestablish its natural functions. Agricultural fields near the channel are critical for floodwater attenuation, groundwater recharge, non-point source pollution buffering, and providing habitat for wildlife. And I would add humans. I, living here my whole life, every part of the watershed I have spent time in, I just love. And it's such a joy to be able to access all these different areas. And so the floodplain management plan has eight categories of mitigation strategies as they are listed here. And then those are broken out into 49 suggested actions to implement to reduce flood risk. So everything in our plan is a suggestion. We don't try to force the counties to do anything, but really, the success of this plan is how each county implements the plan, and so it's key. So the more they're implemented in your county, the more effective they will be in keeping your residents safe and reducing damage costs when a disaster strikes. And a lot of people say, well, I don't want to pay for that, but one thing I like to say is you're going to pay now, or you're going to pay later. And like the 2014 and 15 flash floods that happened in Johnson Lane, both of those floods cost the county a million dollars, a 15-minute flash flood, and that was just to clean up the roads, roadside ditches, and culverts. And so do you want to pay a million dollars now, or hopefully less, or less, you know? So that kind of brings that one to seven ratio to light. You're going to pay now? You can pay a little bit now, or a lot later. And so again, as Planning Commission members, you're in a unique position to make sure these suggested actions are considered when reviewing development proposals. And so as the agenda stated, this was the Dayton version of what happened in those flash floods. As the plan, the agenda stated, there were some, the changes are listed, basically, you know, formatting, we did expand the stormwater section to include LID, and we added a new section, which are pathways to overcome barriers to mitigation. And this came about because we invited the emergency managers from each county to participate. And we realized, wow, we really need to be working together, because I would say we're on the planning side of things, but emergency management and floodplain managers in counties are on the implementation part. And so to understand what those barriers are, and then work together, breaking down silos to break down those barriers is one thing we tried to do. And so we did add one suggested action to the stormwater, which is protect and buffer natural drainage ways from development to ensure historic and natural flows are maintained, and then the appendix changes are listed. They weren't extensive. And so I just want to thank the Douglas County staff, and thank you for letting me present, but I really appreciate how the staff from each county participates in this process. They help provide the updates and information, and then they edit pertinent sections. And so this plan was created for the entire watershed in your county to reduce flood risk. And so floods don't respect political boundaries. And like Courtney said, the Carson River is now mapped so that that, you know, water flows wherever it wants, and it doesn't stop at county lines. And so the goal of this plan is to work together so that when something happens, nothing happens. Nobody's hurt, nobody's killed. And so I just also wanted to say kudos to Courtney and Douglas County for your stormwater management plan. It's really, it's really a great example of what happens when you act on those suggested actions for the good of your county. And so with that, I'll turn it back over to Courtney, and thank you for your time. And if you have any questions, let me know.
Other questions? Jim?
As the river naturally changes course, how does that affect planning? I mean, a big enough storm can actually move it. And, first of all, I love everything that's proactive. Love everything that says we're not going to wait for something bad to happen, then panic. We're going to do things ahead of time. So I just wonder if that creates a challenge as the river, naturally, all rivers change course through time.
Well, I will say that the living river approach looks at that meander belt, where a river is going to change.
It's going to meander within a certain?
Right. And so instead of building up to the very edge or within 50 feet of the river, you want to give that meander belt a place to go.
Courtney Walker, for the record, just to add to that, in our stormwater master plan, we look at it kind of as a two-pronged approach. There's certain areas where you would want to protect the land and not build anything on there, because there's nothing you can do to stop the flood or the river movement. And then there's other areas where you could actually build a detention basin or something like that to help to contain it. And so it just kind of depends on the area that you're in. The river does move around a lot. You're totally right about that. It only really matters, I guess, if there's houses in the way, or bridges, or roads, and things of that nature. So we work closely with the Carson Valley Conservation District to do bank stabilization in strategic places to try to protect it and kind of keep it where it is, where it matters, but in some places you can't.
Thank you.
Other questions? Lori?
So this is an amazing plan, so I have no criticism at all of it, but I do have some questions. We're talking a lot about floodplains, and can you tell me how we establish a floodplain? Is it the FEMA map, or is it a historical suggestion of where that water has flowed to in the past, or how do we determine what is the floodplain?
Well, that reminds me of John Coburn's great, he has a floodplain diagram, which I don't think it's in this document. It's in a cooperative extension document. And so hmm, it's a, like, it makes total sense, but, you know, you have this area of land here. And so the floodway is the channel where the water goes through, and the floodplain is, you know, from a FEMA standpoint, it's the rise of water in what's called a 1% annual chance storm. That's not the best definition, but it is, you know, and so, but there's floodways in flash flood zones. So like the floodway, that's where, like, say you get a 25-year storm, that's like the minimum. But what if you get the storm of the century, or the millennia, and it goes higher? So basically, floodplains are defined a lot of the time by FEMA. And if it's a river, so like in the case of the Carson River, that's what we call a regulatory floodplain, because it's a 1% annual chance. But then like in the area drainage master plans, they show both the 25 and the 100-year, because you're typically going to see a 25-year storm, which if a flash flood channel has been filled up with sediment for years on end, even a 25-year storm can become a big disaster. So.
So I guess my question's for Courtney. How do we in Douglas County look at delineating the areas that are subject to the recommendations in this plan?
Courtney Walker, great question. Floodplain can be described in a couple different ways, but Debbie's right, it's really a FEMA term, it's an insurance tool for them to be able to define the extent of the 100-year storm event, like for the inundation of that area. But we do have these area drainage master plans where we're looking at not only that big storm, but smaller ones as well. And so we are concerned with a floodplain if they're measuring a foot of water, but you might also have an issue if you're in an area where you have six inches of water, and that's not mapped as a regulatory floodplain. But we might want to look at doing a mitigation project in that area if there's something that we want to protect. And so a floodplain isn't always defined by FEMA. It's also, can be defined by the community, and what are the issues that you're trying to alleviate.
Other questions? Dan?
Is this one, you want us to ask questions and make comments, or is there going to be another opportunity?
We're doing questions right now.
Okay, so you've completed your formal presentation?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I did have a question. The plan refers to, my background as a public works official, I'm always interested in beautiful, you know, it's a beautiful plan. We know that. And by the way, I already mentioned, I love the pictures. I think your pictures and your use of visuals tells the story better than all of the words. And particularly as we go forward and try to educate the community and educate And particularly, as we go forward and try to educate the community, and educate us, the commissioners, everybody, you know, what a story those pictures tell. And I noticed a lot of Debbie and Brenda pictures in there, and I encourage you to keep doing that work. But again, from my background, it's always a great plan. Plan's only worth what it's printed on unless we're doing something about it. And so, you know, and Courtney knows this, and I'm interested in, you know, how are we doing? You know, what have we done? What are the consequences of what we're doing? I know there's financial implications, and we'll talk about that with the commission next week, I think, right? And, but it does refer in the plan to Appendix E., which is County Progress.
Right.
And we didn't get Appendix E., so I'm just wondering if you could give us a little bit of an update of how are we doing? You know, what have we done? What are we doing that seems to be right in line with what the plan is recommending? What aren't we doing that we maybe should be doing? You know, where are we, you know, moving out of compliance with the plan? So, I'm curious as to what was in Appendix E. I don't know how detailed it was, but how are we doing?
Not having the agenda before me, I know I provided the link, so you could look at it.
Dan, where are you referencing in the packet?
Let me look at, let's see if I can go to...
She's in the master plan.
Are you referencing something in our packet?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
What page?
And so...
Well, the appendices are listed at the end of the report, so I don't, I think it's like one twenty-nine or something like that, and the report, one thirty, something like that. But it's just...
Well, it'd be nice to know, so we can follow along to what you're saying.
Well, if you look at the...
Right, so I have opened up the appendices.
Agenda package number two oh nine, report number one thirty-nine. There's a list of appendices. I'm asking about Appendix E., which is County Progress Report.
Well, those aren't specifically in our agenda right now. We are talking about the subconservancy report, and in order to move this along, I want to keep the questions confined to the subconservancy report. So, we can talk about that at another time, but that's not pertinent to what our agenda item is. So, I'm going to defer your question to another time and confine...
It's not part of the report? The appendices, is that part of the report?
No.
Counsel? Are the appendices part of the master plan report or not?
Not this report that we have in front of us, no.
That doesn't make sense to me.
I thought they were included in the agenda item.
Courtney Walker, just to help clear up, I think what they included in the, what I included in the attachment was the plan, but not the several, there's like five or six appendices at the end of the plan that were not included. So, the content that's in there, we probably, if that helps you, AJ. I don't know if we want to discuss it if it wasn't...
No, it's a link. You can find those yourself. That's a reference document that you can go to yourself at another time.
Yeah, I tried the link, and it didn't work on mine.
It didn't.
Anyways...
Well, so, it's up here. So, basically, these are the progress. So, and I got to this by going to CWSD.org, and then you go to floodplain management, and then hazard plans and documents. And so, basically, for each item, county staff wrote down their progress that they have made in twenty, at the, when we started collecting comments, twenty twenty-three and four.
Could you possibly share that link with us?
Sure. It's, yeah, I will share it. It's basically CWSD.org. Here, I've got to find it again here. I'll just go back.
Do you want us to...
I'll navigate to it, and you can...
I can email you a link as well?
Yeah.
That's fine. Yeah, that would be fine, because you've got so many great hyperlinks and to different reports and different pictures, which I view is all part of the plan.
Right.
And I just had a question on the one that talked about how we do, how are we doing?
Right.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Do you have more of the report to share? Or did you finish your presentation?
That is it. Courtney was going to wrap it up as far as...
Well, I don't want to cut off, Courtney Walker, I don't want to cut off any other questions, if there are any. But essentially, this is kind of a high-level plan, thirty-thousand-foot view of what the entire watershed goals are collectively, specific to Douglas County. They're a little more general. They don't have specific projects in it. Those can be found in our Stormwater Master Plan, which will be discussed at a future VOC, or Board of County Commissioners, meeting in September. And so, how are we doing? I would say we've definitely made some progress, but strive for progress, not perfection, I guess.
I had a couple of questions or comments about the mitigation barriers.
Mm-hmm.
And there were a couple places where there are a couple things, costly mitigation basins or drainage systems may be unnecessary if each county implements ordinances or before construction occurs. This is page one eighty-two of the packet. And also, same paragraph, "By reducing flood risk on each property, downstream flood impacts to neighborhoods and communities are also reduced." I think this information is right on, dead on, fabulous information that needs to be stressed by all the counties and every master plan and every development project, and I'm so pleased to see it. However, there's some jargon in this report that, in the same section, and it talks about mitigation barriers caused by social constructs, and it talks about silos. Maybe I'm just old, but I don't know what silos are. And when I think silos, I think the towers are silos, layers.
Right.
And couldn't you just say layers instead of silos? And, you know, I think the less jargon we have in reports, the easier it is for laypeople to read them.
Right.
So...
That's good information.
Personally, I would like to see that kind of thing.
Right. And I guess it's a metaphor for if you have a silo of public works here, a silo of planning here, a silo of floodplain management, and a silo of building department, and they're not talking, you know? So, it's a metaphor of those different entities within a community that if everyone's not working together, then that's kind of, but I will take your advice to put in less jargon and make it clear.
Yeah, I think jargon may have a place somewhere. I mean, we all talked to jargon when we were growing up, but still, it's, we don't all have access to these trainings. And then, on page one seventy-four, it has actions to capture stormwater on individual parcels. And in the bullets, it says, "Avoid planting on mounds, especially in Nevada's dry climates." And I think that is excellent advice, because if you drive around the county, you see people with their landscaping, and everything they plant is on a mound, which creates more runoff, and they dry out faster, and they're all sprinkling, overhead sprinklers, and I think your plans for irrigation and for landscaping, again, need to be in all the design, landscaping designs that we all put together with planning to, need to be disseminated to every subdivision around Douglas County, and Lyon County, and Alpine County, and every other county in Nevada, because, one, it helps with water quality, it helps with water use, it helps with runoff, helps with everything else. But those were my comments.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have to say, Brenda has led an effort over the last several years to, one, audit all the county's stormwater ordinances.
Not just stormwater.
Well, we've done floodplanes first, and then we did stormwater next, through different funding sources, to kind of see where those inconsistencies are, because I know in Carson City where I live, for a long time, there was an ordinance that if you were going to build an industrial building, you had to have mounted landscaping. And so, just things like that, where it's like, wait a minute, we live in a desert. And so, kind of through those audits, and basically worked with county staff to then suggest changes to those ordinances pertaining to floodplain management and stormwater management, so that, you know, you're saving water, you're trying to get all the water you can into the ground, as opposed to, I like to say, just going out to the desert and evaporating. So, the more you have those kinds of plans that can keep water in your community, the better.
Other questions? Kirk?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Excellent report. Thank you for all your hard work on this. I really appreciate this, and I think this is going to be very valuable to all of the people who were affected in Douglas County. I did have, not to get too far in the weeds, I did have one question on your suggested actions. Packet page one forty, and the page seventy, I guess, if your report number seven, says, "Identify and promote options for landowner incentive programs such as floodplain leasing program and conservation easements that provide compensation to landowners providing ecosystem services and seek funding mechanisms." I assume this is a recommendation for the counties like Douglas County, that you want us to promote options, but I'm a little bit unclear what floodplain leasing would be. If, I'm kind of guessing that it's a landowner who has some land in the floodplain, and they lease that, would they lease that to the county then? Can you give me just a flavor of what this might mean?
It could be that. It could be, we see it most often in like conservation easements, you know, it keeps ag in the community, and then they can use it for agriculture. The floodplain leasing program, we don't really have one at this point, but it would be great if we could have it leased, but I'm not sure who would do that.
It's kind of like, you know, a conservation, you know, farmers can join to make their crops, or to not plant. It's a similar thing, you know, to not develop, and it would be like leasing, you know, floodplain lands in that way. Is that kind of the idea?
Courtney Walker, for the record, I just wanted to add, I think what you might mean with that is sometimes there's a big piece of ag land that the rancher's family doesn't want to continue to put into production, but they could lease it to someone who doesn't own land, but has cows and wants to graze them in the floodplain. So, it's still being used in the same way, even if the landowner doesn't want to use it for that purpose.
And then, just to follow up, then the incentive would be provided by the county. So, Douglas County would incentivize either financially or in some other way to the landowner.
I think you could do it that way. I also think it could be a private type of transaction, but maybe promoting the idea, but there could be incentives to it as well.
Well, thank you. Again, excellent report, and I appreciate the hard work you've put in.
Thank you.
Jim?
I also really appreciate this report. It kind of brought me to mind what was just mentioned, is we have a lot of talk on the TDR program. And a TDR program where the sending areas are in the floodplain seems to me a great idea to conserve that land and send those development rights to an area more appropriate for growth. And since we are discussing also in this county, the TDR program, it's a good point to realize that that program can be effective in terms of the floodplain.
Right, and I kind of feel like Carson City is a really good example, how that's been effective. You know, they have golf courses and open space that they maintain for all their residents to be able to access, and it has become a draw for people to want to live in that community, because they can enjoy those open spaces. And then, when there's a flood, the city just closes down those areas and says, "This is not safe today, but it will be in a week or so." And, so, yeah.
But you're not suggesting Carson City has anything better than us, right?
Well, you know, I am a Carson City girl, even though I'm married to Douglas guy.
Not with that, not with that name, you're not. No, that's an excellent point as well.
Mm-hmm.
Bryce?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Maybe I missed it, but just going through the report, is there any suggestions or recommendations in terms of irrigation ditch management and the effect that that has on the diversion of water where it's not supposed to go? You know, I know on the western part of the valley, you know, there's just a lot of ditches that, you know, now have development on them that maybe don't have water rights, and so, those irrigation ditches are not being maintained, and so, the water is going in a different direction than it should, and especially, you know, when there's a lot of runoff, or, you know, we have a flash flood. And so, I didn't see that in here, but it may be something to consider. I'd like to see, you know, more of the irrigation ditch management, especially so that it gets down to the ag land where it belongs, but more importantly, that it, well, not more importantly, but as important, it doesn't get diverted somewhere else.
Courtney Walker, for the record, I don't know that it's referred to in this plan. As this one is a little more high-level, that concept does apply in several counties, though. We do have a section in the Stormwater Master Plan that addresses that, in working with the ag community to, particularly where we have roads that cross their ditches, but we also kind of coordinate, if they aren't able to get their water, they are allowed to enter the land to maintain areas if needed. So, we work pretty closely with them, but it is addressed just in a separate plan. The Stormwater Master Plan talks more about the implementation strategies here specifically.
Thank you. The last people I'm concerned about are the ranchers managing the ditches, because that's their livelihood. It's the people that aren't managing the ditches that may happen to have purchased property where the ditch runs through, and so, that water is not making it from the mountains down into the water, or into the ag land, because it's not being maintained upstream. So, I just, I see it a lot, where it's not the ranchers that are the problem. If they don't have, you know, they maintain their ditches, because if they don't, then the water doesn't get where it needs to go. So, maybe just some level of enforcement upstream on those particular properties where, because I see it all around me, you know, they're not managing the ditches, and the water's not getting to go where it should go, and there's really no consequences or enforcement for doing that. I don't know the vehicle, per se, to do that, but it'd be nice to be able to have some level of enforcement, or monitoring, or management, or something, so that that water is just not going wherever it, you know, is it not intended to go.
That's a really great suggestion, and it kind of puts me in mind of what the county did, working with the conservation districts and the state in relation to weed management, kind of the same problem where someone would buy a small parcel, and then the next thing you know, it's got a noxious weed that's going to affect the livelihoods of a lot of ranchers. And so, they kind of developed this program where the state would send a letter and say, "Hey, you know, you are, these noxious weeds need to be removed," and it was kind of like a three strikes and you're out. And then, if they didn't remove it, then the county basically was authorized to go in and remove those weeds and send the bill. And I almost wonder if, you know, you could work with the federal watermaster and others, and, you know, the conservation districts, to kind of educate people who buy these types of parcels. I mean, I'm just kind of thinking of potential solutions, but a lot of times, people want to do the right thing, they just don't know and understand that they're part of this bigger system. And so, a lot of it ends up being education.
If there aren't any more questions at this time, I'd like to open public comment.
Could I ask one more question, Chairman?
Okay, Dan?
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. So, this umbrella plan, and you just mentioned the Douglas County Stormwater Master Plan. So, this plan informs the county plan. Is that how I understand the hierarchy? And then, that's where your CIP is and all that. So, those CIPs, in your opinion, are addressed... So, those CIPs, in your opinion, are addressing the goals of this master plan?
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't go away, because we'll probably have some questions afterwards.
Oh, okay.
I'd like to open public comment. Anyone wishing to speak public comment, please come to the microphone, write your name on the roster, and say it for the record. First speaker?
Do I sign my name here? Yeah, I'm John Coburn. I'm John Coburn.
Thank you, sir.
Should I, oh, okay, put my name here. Yeah, I'm John Coburn, reside in the Johnson Lane area, and I worked with the University of Nevada Cooperative Extension for 26 years, retired in 2017. I've been involved with the Carson River Coalition since its founding in 1998, and I've, we met every month, or sometimes more often than every month, for over 20 years. And as Debbie pointed out, one of the members, Steve Lewis, who was our cooperative extension person in Gardnerville, asked the question, "What's our main message to the public?" And we, he did a whole process to gather public, to gather the opinion of all the stakeholders, and this is a big group of agricultural people, city people, and so forth. And through that process, floodplain management came out on top as the main message that we wanted to educate the public about. And I just wanted to say that Douglas County has been very active at pursuing the goal of better floodplain management. Douglas County has an element of the master plan for flooding, and the Douglas County has been, has passed this floodplain plan every time it's been brought forward since 2008, when it was finalized first time. I just wanted to express my support for it, and to give my thanks to both the county and the Planning Commission and so forth, as well as the Carson Water Subconservancy District, because we're in better shape now than we were when we started, actually started, wrote our first publication on flooding here in the county in 1995, so that was 30 years ago. So, there's still work to do, but we're on the right path, I think.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker? Seeing no one rise, I will close public comment and return it to the Planning Commission. Are there other questions or comments? Seeing none, I would like to thank you both. Wonderful presentation.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion? Kirk?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would move that the Planning Commission recommended to the Board of County Commissioners that they adopt the 2025 update to the Carson River floodplain management plan as presented.
Do we have a second?
I'll second. I'll second.
We have a motion by Kirk, second by Dan, and do we have all those voting?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
And now, it's time for closing public comment. Is there any closing public comment? Seeing no one rise, I will close public comment. And I do have a couple of announcements. On September 9th, we are planning to have Planning Commission, 1:00 p.m. here, and on September 17th, at 3:00 p.m. at CVIC, the B OCC, we'll have a special meeting to hear the Douglas County stormwater plan, which will take into accounting some of this information, as well as information specific to Douglas County. And Courtney will be there, as well as our own staff besides Courtney. Thank you, and hopefully, many of you will be in attendance to hear specifically what Douglas County has to offer.
Excuse me, Chair, what was the time and date of that?
3:00 p.m.
On?
September 17th.
Okay, oh, September 17th. Okay, thank you.
Thank you all. This meeting is adjourned.